Okay, it should be good to go.
Welcome to the Monday, April 10th, meeting of the City of Rolling Hills, City Council meeting of Rolling Hills. I like to call the meeting to order and we have a roll call.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Councilmember Piper.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mersch.
Here.
Mayor Wilson.
Here.
And Councilmember Derringer is absent.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I will lead. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
I went back to, I went, I went back to the third grade when they, when they didn't used to have "under God." They took it out and put it in again. I said a reverted.
Presentations. We have something tonight?
We do not have any presentations this evening.
Okay, I'm thinking of two weeks ago. Okay, approve the order of agenda. Does anybody have an issue with the order for the benefit of the public or staff, which we have done so?
Is the item that Sean's here for?
It's on the consent calendar.
That's under consent, yeah, okay.
Okay, could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second. I'm asking for a second, sorry.
I'll second.
Yeah.
Unanimous blue folder items.
Blue folder items. Tonight you have two items. The first is for eight G. And in the packet you'll see just samples of pages that were changed based on recommendations that Mr. Bennett provided to our consultant. And then 12A is the, it is a verbal report from the committee, the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee, but we typed up the recommendations and put them in there for the rest of the council.
Thank you.
I move to make a motion where we receive as presented.
Receive and file, yeah.
Receive and file.
Is there a, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Public comment on non-agenda items? Is this about the eight G?
I don't know the outcome of the fencing thing, exactly what's happening, but I was gonna talk about Arbor Day and.
Okay. Sure, come on up.
I'm Sean Bennett, Bennett Landscape, and just here to speak about Arbor Day was one issue, 28th of April. Wanted to invite the city to participate, and I know Christian's working on that. It is still the 20, 28th of April, and we do have a landscape plan that's been delivered to City Hall, so we have some good ideas there that, that the city manager's gonna look over the plans and then agendize it, so, but the plan actually calls out a tree that will, we'd like to recommend for the campus, one of three, but, so that was one of our, it's, are they familiar with, we're donating a 15 gallon tree Arbor Day?
This is the free planting on Arbor Day.
Yeah, I wanted to have a public statement for it and dedicate the tree to the public and have everybody aware of trees and what they do to our beautiful community. So that's what, what it was about. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Could I just ask, Sean, where are you planning on putting this tree?
There's a.
Tree that was.
The one that went down?
Yeah, there's one, but there's a couple that have gone down over the years, but there's one right between, inside the back right corner of the building, I guess, if, if you draw a line, imaginary line between the two buildings, there's a tree that was.
To potentially interfere with solar collection though?
It would. If we can keep the tree small and it's far enough away, I could look at it in that regard, but that would be good input if that's in the wrong spot. There is another location. We thought that was the most predominant because Rick thought of having them on a, almost triangular, so you get a glimpse. These trees are deciduous and they have flowers, which you don't have too many. You have the one pear tree, but that's, is that gonna stay with the solar?
I don't think it's been determined yet, but just, I'm thinking ahead here.
Just be aware there's most likely solar going on top of the building.
Right.
So I don't wanna plant something now and a year or two have to.
Right, are both buildings affected by solar or just one?
We're working on it.
Okay, so those questions we probably need to address in the landscape plan, too. We would like to get a commitment on the location, though, for the 28th so we can actually do a tree planting, so.
Is that something that staff's working on?
Yeah, we're working with Sean on it and we'll discuss, you know, based on conversations with the RHCA after your last council meeting's discussion.
Okay, great.
Concerns with landscape here, and I'll just leave you all to your business tonight.
All good.
Okay. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too.
Anybody else? Public comment? Okay, moving on to a consent calendar. Anybody wanna pull an item?
I make a motion where we receive as presented.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, except for?
I'm so sorry. Is B not coming tonight?
I don't know.
Doesn't matter.
No, 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 I was just curious, 'cause I thought, I was just checking. I would like to pull eight C. No, 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 sorry. D, like dog.
I make a motion to receive.
You wanna approve?
Approve as presented, everything but eight D.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, eight D.
I don't really have any questions on the items on here, because I've called and asked about them, but I know we're doing some changes, John, with who's actually preparing checks and so forth now, and I have a history of asking that when something is shown here like professional services or insurance, if you could tell us, like, what, give a little more description in here, like, standard insurance company, its employee insurance premium, is it dental, is it life insurance? Just in general, there are, there are several things on here. You can, you can see them that, like, revise LLC, check 28, 104 from the bottom. It just says payment plan. You know, if I don't happen to remember who revise is, it makes it much easier for us to review these if we know what the purpose of them is.
Sure.
Because sometimes the vendor is not self-explanatory.
Sure.
Thank you. So with that, I'm ready.
Solson soon.
And just for, for your own edification, revise is our website host.
Thank you.
Company.
Yeah, I figured that out after, after checking out. And I know we're in transition with new people writing the checks now, so.
I make a motion.
Comment? Just wanna make sure there isn't.
All right, public comment on eight G. Okay, back to council.
Move item eight D.
Second.
All in favor, item eight D, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, excluded consent calendar items, we already did that. Commission items, none. Public hearings, none. Old business, number 12. Receive and file a report from the April 6, 2023 Solid Waste and Recycling Committee. So I wasn't here two weeks ago when this item got referred to the Solid Waste Committee. However, Leah and I met on this and we had a discussion. We were basically given, well, three options. One was to recommend an ordinance for the collection of solid waste. One was, another option was to establish a policy, and the third option was something besides those two, which we didn't discuss. So we, we talked, we met for about an hour and a half, and we came to the conclusion that, and I'd be happy to expand on this if anybody wants, but the, the cliff notes is that we thought a policy would be better, a little bit more adaptable than an ordinance, easier to, to create and have more flexibility, like I mentioned. And essentially, well, it's in the blue folder. Essentially, we came to the conclusion that it would be best to ensure that we charge any developed lot for solid waste collection, and any undeveloped lot would be exempt from solid waste. Would you like to expand on that more?
No, other than that we are trying to be consistent, and we're trying to make sure that all properties understand that they're responsible for dispersing of their trash according to all the standards and so forth. So we have this uniformity, and everybody will be able to understand what the process is. And again, the concept of the policy instead of an ordinance was just because we didn't see any advantage to having an ordinance. Doesn't make things any easier, and this does allow us, and it allows staff to have consistency in knowing which properties we'll be billing every, every year.
What we did talk about the fact that over the years, there's been several situations where a, a developed lot doesn't pay for solid waste pickup, and it's, it's hard to track whether they actually have access to the service or not, or if they use it or not. Our decision was just to be consistent, to include everybody, because if they, they might use it, they need to pay for it. If they had a construction project, they still might be generating solid waste and flying under the radar. And similarly, or I guess just similarly, with the undeveloped lots, the owners of the lots could opt in to the service if they wanted to. We weren't going to make them pay unless they came to us. Of course, they wouldn't receive the service either, theoretically. We'd tell the public not to provide service, but if they wanted to take advantage of the service for clippings or, you know, whatever else they may be using the property for, they could opt in and, and pay the, the cost of that.
I just wanted to think, we, there have been observed instances of people that have unoccupied, quote unquote, unoccupied property or properties that are under construction. They do use the large item pickup, the green waste pickup, so we have other services besides just the twice weekly service.
So is there a?
I make a motion where we receive and file.
Second.
Public, public comment?
Comment on this item? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Do you wanna provide any direction as to whether the council accepts the recommendations or not?
I move that we accept the recommendations.
I'll second it.
Public comment? Excuse me, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Excuse me. All right, next item, approve a second amendment to the professional services agreement with Bolton Engineers to revise the tennis ADA improvement plans and file construction permits with the Los Angeles County Building and Safety Department for the ADA improvements at the tennis courts. Staff report?
Okay, I can just give you a brief overview of this one. We have a contract with Bolton Engineering. They've been doing work for us for, let's see, it's August 2017. That's when we hired them. We made some modifications, and that's included in the plans that you have there. Basically, what the revisions are is to really include that cutout there that they're showing on the plan to, so that the courts can be squared off, and you can have four courts, four pickleball courts in that one tennis court. So it basically squares that area off. The total scope is really revised grading plans to eliminate proposed cabana, adjacent hardscape, and north retaining wall, and revisions to the grading pad and slope, and also revise associated drainage to accommodate. And then they revise the alignment of walls adjacent to the tennis courts to accommodate the future tennis court expansion. And so the total proposed fee would be $4,000.
Any questions?
Public comment?
Yeah. Okay, public comment? None? Okay, back to council.
I would make a motion we consider approve Bolton's change order request.
I second it.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Takes us to new business 13A, receive and file information update on Know Your Zone campaign PvP Ready website and Zone Haven platform launch.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. This item is, is really just meant to give you an update as to what the staffs of the four peninsula cities are working on right now as it specifically relates to the eventual rollout of the Zone Haven platform and how we plan to create an educational and informative campaign to alert residences, residents across the peninsula to what it is. And part of what we are doing, as you'll read in the staff report, is we are creating right now a website, which will be PvPReady.org. It'll be information for all four cities. It'll have a link to Zone Haven, so that way we can promote Know Your Zone. And one of the complications here in Rolling Hills is that we already have block captain zones, which are very different. The zones that we're talking about here are evacuation zones that have been created by the Office of Emergency Management at LA County, and in the event of a catastrophic event, these zones would, people would know, say, in Rolling Hills, we're gonna have three zones as, as OEM has created. And if you are in zone one and you get an alert that zone one should evacuate, then anybody that lives in that area would know that it's time to hop in the car and leave. And of course, the sheriff and the fire department would be working in conjunction with any catastrophic emergency. What we are doing right now, and as you'll see in the staff report, I've kinda laid out for you both a little bit graphically and also some of our, our rollout plan. We're gonna roll out an educational and informative plan over the course of, starting at the end of this month with a teaser, and then in May, because it's wildfire awareness month, we will try to do most of our messaging based around that, so that people have an understanding as to why are we doing this, and then what are the, as you'll see, like, why are we using this program? What's your zone? Educating people as to why it's important, how to memorize your zone, how to use your zone. We will work with a variety of partners across the peninsula, both in commerce, government, schools, newspapers, neighborhood watch groups, anything we can do to just really make sure people are fully aware of what it is and why it exists, and then how to simply use it. The website will just be a one-click place where people can go and they can get information for their own individual city and/or any of the other three, but it'll all be really specific to, like I said, a catastrophic event that would require an evacuation. So it is simple as that. As it relates to Zone Haven, we did have a meeting this morning with the Office of Emergency Management, with representatives from LA County Fire, the Sheriff's Department in all four cities, talking about the rollout, how that works and collaborates with both our Area G and with our South Bay Alert system. And so it looks like, we were hoping that we would roll out Zone Haven right at the same time we're doing this campaign, but it looks now like Zone Haven's gonna roll out towards the end of May, if not, you know, the very beginning of June. So that's my, my brief update, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I do. You mentioned three zones in Rolling Hills. Is that real? Is that what it's gonna look like?
So in, if, when you, when you would look at the, the map, how the zones are carved up on the peninsula, yes, the city of Rolling Hills proper will have three zones as Office of Emergency Management, in collaboration with the fire department and sheriff's department has decided to kinda cut it up. So if, if I was, I think the way I see it, and I, I haven't gotten into the granularity of it, but it looks like Portuguese Ben Road, anything to the east of, to the west of that, and north of Crest Road is zone one. Anything to the east of Portuguese Ben Road and, and north of Crest Road is zone two, and then zone three is everything of Crest Road going south down to the border of the city. That's, I'm just trying to remember visually how they have it diced up.
Does it line up at all with our exits?
I don't know that there's necessarily, I'm not sure how they determined why those zones would be cut as they are, but I'm sure it does have to do with the entry and exit points that, that we already have.
Any other questions?
Could you make sure when we put it on our website, 'cause there's gonna be click to leave to another website, that we open in a new tab or a new window?
Of course.
Thank you very much.
And then I just have a quick question on where we talk about an e-blast message, and I know that this is a generic thing. It doesn't necessarily apply to us, since we don't have emails for our residents. How are we going to do an e-blast, or are, that's not for us?
So, yeah, I'm, a lot of what we're talking about here is gonna differ from city to city based on what they do. Like, the other cities don't have a blue newsletter. Clearly, we're going to use the blue newsletter. We'll use our social media outlets, Nextdoor, whatever we are using at this point. We could do, you know, we could do a separate mailer than, than a newsletter even. Or, you know, we do have emails as a result of some of our emergency notification systems.
Right.
And we could put together an e-blast if we wanted. So I think, you know, at the end of the day, what's most important is how many touches can we get with any resident to just kinda drill it into their heads that this is there, and, you know, just be reminding them over the course of the next four to five months. Sure.
Yep. Receiving file?
Public comment first? None? Okay.
I make a motion receiving file.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, 13B, receive and file a report on the March 23rd, 2023 Traffic Commission meeting. So I'd like to report on that. I know that the supplemental traffic enforcement money that we pay each year hasn't been universally popular with other council members. I've always pushed for it. I sit as Chair of the Traffic Commission, so I'm, you know, I'm sharing the, the desire of the other commission members. But I have to tell you, after sitting through the last two meetings and seeing, as you can see on the report, nothing but stop sign violations, I was not very happy about it. And I brought that up to the officer that was reporting. She reported that they don't have anybody currently that's, that's active, trained in LIDAR, which is what they use, as I said, on the side of the road. So therefore, they couldn't write speeding tickets. Interestingly, until I complained about that, until John followed up, they have started writing speeding tickets by, what is it called?
Pacing or something.
Pacing.
Right. So suddenly, they're able to write traffic tickets by pacing. The thing is, the supplemental traffic enforcement is not resulting in any speeding tickets. It's only through their regular, the way I understand it, at least, it's only through their regular patrol of the city, which they should be doing anyway. So we're paying a lot of money to write a lot of stop sign tickets, and I know that they're not very popular with most residents, and frankly, I think they're less important than keeping the speed down on Crest, particularly in Portuguese Ben, you know, nothing new there. But I just, I feel uncomfortable continuing to promote the supplemental traffic enforcement cost, especially in light of our budget situation, without the expected benefit of it from writing the speeding tickets. So I just wanted to get some visibility with the council and see, you know, what other members felt about this, the cost. Do, John, do you know what we budget for supplemental traffic enforcement?
No, I don't.
Give me one minute.
Okay, so whatever it is, it is, but, you know, I just wanted to bring this up for discussion. If anybody is interested in. Well, okay, so, okay, let's do public comment.
Okay.
Come on up, Jim. To get on the microphone.
Jim Ikley, resident. I was noticing that, too, is they were all stop signs, and there's no way to determine what kind of stop sign violations they are. I mean, if they, if you had this number of stop sign violations and the people were just blowing through the stop signs, it'd be good tickets. But, I mean, the others are good tickets, too, because there's no such thing as a rolling and stop. They're two different definitions. But it seems like a waste of money for rolling stops. Kathy'd be very happy. It doesn't make any difference to me. I stop and the guy almost hissed me because he expects me to roll on through it. But she'd be very happy to see it go.
I stop. Not everybody does, and I, you know, I'd get too worked up about it, unless they really don't even touch their brakes, which happens sometimes, too, but it, it just seems like it's going the wrong direction, and.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd move that we eliminate the supplemental traffic enforcement funds from the budget.
I'm sorry, Jim, I had a comment.
Go ahead, but there's no second yet.
I think that there's some value of the sheriff's presence, just the black and white in the city. I think there's a value to that. It may be true that a rolling stop violation is not as bad as going right through, but I think it's still dangerous if you are a pedestrian, or on a horse, or walking your dog, or whatever. And it seems that they're going to have somebody else doing it now with the pacing until they get a LIDAR person changed. But we used to talk about just how much good it was when, when the decoy car was parked in a visible place, as far as stopping, getting people to slow down, even though there weren't any tickets being written for it. And I don't think writing the tickets is what we're looking for. We're trying to get people to slow down. So I, I'm still in favor of, of doing it. So, sorry, Jim, go ahead.
I would make a motion that we eliminate the supplemental traffic enforcement funds from the budget.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay.
You have a roll call.
Two, yeah, but I have a comment myself. I have mixed feelings on this. I would like to see an improvement in the sheriff's deputies' ability to, to write speeding tickets. You know, unfortunately, we only meet every other month with the, the traffic commission, so there's, there's kind of a dwell between the last meeting, which was, I think, two, three weeks ago, something like that, and the next meeting. It's interesting that they were able to start writing speeding tickets through pacing, and I'll, I'll give myself credit, because I started complaining about it. I was pretty vocal during the meeting about this, as a matter of fact. I would be, eliminated from the budget is, is, well, we're talking about budget coming up for, I guess, starting in July, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well.
Well, Christian, how much money is it?
So.
Doesn't matter. You're not doing their job.
I don't care if it's five bucks, and they don't, they do this crap and they don't tell us.
Jim, hold on a second. How much money is it?
So I, I can't find a line item in the budget that specific, that specifies supplemental specifically, but I did go back and just look at recent bills, right, for supplemental. One was like 1,100, one was 1,400, one was 3,200. So I think it depends on the level of time that they are able to give.
We have a budget number.
Yes, and it's quite possible that it comes out, you guys have like the, the cops' safety budget, you know, so the citizens' option for public safety, and you also have a CLEEP fund, which are both related to, I think.
I don't think it can come out of cops.
I'm not, I'm not sure, so.
Here's my thing, Pat, is they need a warning shot over the bow. Us taking it out of the budget, if they can figure out what the heck they're doing, and then they wanna come back and tell us why, we should add it back, because the speeding is, people excessively speeding is the problem. The gardeners and the mamas rolling the stop signs is just ridiculous. The sheriff department, on the same time, is doing a great job of when they leave Lamita driving through. I see them all the time, just driving through, and people comment about how I saw them on my street. Those are all great things. I mean, so we're not trying to have a negative relationship with them, but them taking the easy roll on the stop sign thing is ridiculous. So when they can figure out how to get the speeders again, which is the part that actually matters.
Do you think that they're trying to get extra service up here?
I think, I think they're not trying to do anything.
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't think.
I, I think my guess is they're driving through the town because we asked them to, which has been great.
Right.
And then they get paid the extra 30 grand a year, and we get a little more of whatever. They park their car here, and then they park by the stop sign at the top, and they write the people driving through that thing all day long, 'cause everyone rolls that thing.
Well, my only comment is we were talking about if we stop it now, and if they figure out how they can give us better service for speeders, to come back to us, they're not gonna be coming back to us. This isn't, this isn't something at their initiative.
Yeah.
And they have a hard time getting people.
Well, if they've got anybody trained in LIDAR, something's wrong.
Yeah.
Okay, and that means they're pacing, that means they're following somebody. You know how rare that is?
Right, and of course they're gonna slow down.
And that's so rare. If you're not sitting there with your LIDAR, you're not getting people. And you're just sitting there trying to look like you're doing something, getting them others, rolling through the stops, taking their kids to school. That's not what I'm all about.
Okay.
And I did talk to Sergeant McCoy about the issue, and she had a conversation with Deputy Lopez, who was at the meeting. Deputy Lopez expressed the concerns that the traffic commission had, and that's why they went back out and they were, they started, you know, writing, writing traffic tickets. Sergeant McCoy did mention that, I mean, they're really at the council's whim, whatever direction you, you give them. I mean, they're willing to do it. They did mention, though, that they, their LIDAR-trained officer right now is out. There was an accident. He's been out for several months. And so right now, they don't have somebody trained in LIDAR. They do have somebody that's going through the process of getting trained. But right now, I guess the method they're using is pacing or, you know, other methods in order to write tickets.
And if I could add to that, they did make a point to say that it's overtime, so they're looking for individuals at the station to come in on overtime to, to work supplemental.
Yeah, that was, that was, okay, so during the meeting, it wasn't clear to me if they really want this work or not, because.
They don't.
I'm not sure that they do, because they, they said, well, you know, it. I'm not sure that they do, because they said, well, you know, it's a voluntary overtime position, and we have trouble filling it because we're already short-staffed. I thought, geez, you know, we're paying you good money for this. We're paying you good money, and we're not getting what we asked for. So I was getting really frustrated with the whole process.
I don't think they are, Pat. I think that this is something that it may become more problems, more trouble than it's worth to them, because they're willing to offer the service, you know, for a fee. But if you start getting complaints about the people that you send up there don't do this, and they can't do that, and they've already got trouble getting it scheduled, I don't think this is a winning thing for them. I think that they would, until we come back to them, if we drop it now, and we decide in some time in the future, if we want to try again, and we can ask them the questions, but I don't think they're going to be coming back to us saying, gee, we solved the problem.
I think, I think it'll be on us, and it'll be.
They're obviously, they didn't bother telling us when they couldn't do their job. I mean, you know, you can't do your job that you're hired for, you need to tell the people paying you. And they obviously didn't fill the need to do that.
So we have a motion and a second to eliminate the supplemental traffic enforcement from the budget. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Matters from City Council, anyone? Matters from staff? Fire, fuel abatement, and code enforcement quarterly report for the first quarter of two thousand twenty-three.
Yeah, so we have the report for the first quarter of two thousand twenty-three. There were eleven cases closed during that period, four of them dealing with vegetation or dead trees. Four cases were opened, including one involving dead vegetation. And in total, there's eleven open cases with five of them dealing with dead vegetation and trees. City Council may recall that we recently hired or signed a contract with Fourleaf. They came on board beginning of the year. Their officer began starting service on January thirty-first, so basically the end of January. The person's been here for about two months now, serving for February and March. And so that's one of the reasons why there hasn't been a lot of cases that have been opened. I mean, we're focused on really closing some of the existing cases. And also, it's been raining quite a bit, and it's the winter month, so it's hard to tell if a tree is dead or dormant. And so, you know, I actually told them, you know, be careful with that, because sometimes, you know, you might have a tree that's dormant, and you don't want to go out there and, you know, have a notice of violation for, and then find out later on that it's actually not a dead tree, it's actually alive, just, you know, it doesn't have any leaves. With that, we've also gone out, we've, you know, I mentioned it has been raining quite a bit, so we've gone out and there's some issues with drainage. A lot of storm drains coming out, and it's hard to tell if it's actually stormwater, or if it's a broken irrigation line. I've actually gone to places and let them know, and I found out that it's an irrigation line, I'd go out there and, you know, contact the owner and let them know. Some of them don't know, they're just, you know, out of the, away from their home, and so they'll call up their gardener and they'll have them, you know, shut it off that same day. And storm drain issues, it just, you know, again, happens to be, you know, raining quite a bit. We just give people warnings about excessive water, if we see them, you know, coming down the driveways, but they're not actually recorded in this list, so.
There was, I don't know if it's on these reports, but there was, I think we talked about it, a leak of some sort, or water running on Saddleback, and it was thought to be a broken irrigation pipe, and then you looked at it and thought, no, it looked more like natural drainage from the rain. But I was told a couple... Sorry?
Back to Seahorse.
Yeah. I was told a couple of days ago that it was still, there was still water running in that location.
Actually, I went out there, well, I went out there and I saw the rain, the stormwater coming out, and to me, it looked like stormwater. And it was maybe an hour or so after it rained. Our officer went out there maybe a day or two afterwards and didn't see anything at all when it was dry.
Okay. And this officer recently gave notice we're going to see a new one, is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, we have a new officer that's cross-training right now.
Yeah, the ones that...
Yeah, but they're long-term employees, never... Okay.
Super expensive and no improvement.
I do believe the agreement, though, with Fourleaf does have a provision that if they do one, don't quote me on this, but if they do one more a year, then the city does get eighty hours of free, not free, but...
How many hours?
I believe eighty.
Three, two hours.
Thirty-two, excuse me. Sorry, I was thinking two.
Well, you know, that's all good and well, but I think what we want is consistency. Yeah, we, you know, the money is...
Look, they promised.
Yeah, right. The money is, you know, will be, but we don't get the job done, we don't get the service. So that's not something I'm looking forward to implementing, but it's all we got.
And if you can refresh my memory, how much did we authorize per month for Fourleaf when we negotiated with them?
It was twelve hours a week, so basically a day and a half per week. Their billing rate is ninety-five an hour. And the budget actually went down for code enforcement. I think we reduced that.
But I was just, you know, when we signed the checks for the first bill that we got from Fourleaf, I didn't really have a concept of, I couldn't remember how much that we had authorized to them. We did have a line item for it, so that's fine. I'll find that out later.
Any other questions for John?
Were the new people involved with any of the closed cases at all?
The officer that we currently have is, yeah, they're going back and they're closing out cases.
How many did they actually do?
So there's been eleven closed cases?
Right. And I know one is a my neighbor, and I'm sure that that was nothing to do with them. It says it's closed two fourteen, and there's construction at their house, and I can't believe someone complained about it, which is amazing. And I can't believe the officer had to do anything to close it, because it was closed. She served long ago.
Sir, January thirty-first is when she started?
Correct.
So anything after that date, was closed after she started, how much impact she had on it, you know?
Right.
I don't quite know.
Because I know these trees were done well before February fourteenth. This fifteen Upper Blackwater Canyon, which I can't believe someone complained about, on ten-four, they complained, and so it was closed two fourteen. I know the, I watched, I saw that house clear out all these trees and stuff well before February fourteenth. Anyway.
Well, we didn't have somebody or something.
They obviously didn't even need to have anybody. They're doing construction and clearing out trees. I can't believe some neighbor had the nerve to complain. And I can't believe that this code enforcement had anything to do with it at all.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Bring it back to council.
Make a motion, receive and file.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next item is receive and file update on city manager's discussion with the other Palos Verdes Peninsula city managers regarding support for peninsula-wide emergency notification, siren study, and pursuit of grants.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. This will be very brief. At the last meeting, we were discussing the Peninsula Public Safety Committee, Council Member Derringer's motion, and after the motion to receive and file, there was just some comments directed at the city manager to look in and talk with the other city managers and just see if they were willing to help us as a lead agency in this. And so my report back to you is that the city managers of Rolling Hills Estates and Rancho Palos Verdes have expressed a willingness to pull together in order to help in any way towards preparation of a report to bring back to the PPSC. The city manager in Palos Verdes Estates did not respond, but right now, they are out of city manager, so they just have an interim city manager right now, and that may be why there was no response at this time. So that is my report, that we will get some assistance on this from them.
Would you like to update the council on the conversation with Frank Serenin?
Yeah, I decided, we had, during this discussion, that we had at the last council meeting, it was, well, you may be getting staff's opinion, what are the other council members saying? So I sent a letter to a few other council members in other cities to see if, what their interest was from a city council level. Pat and I talked to one council member in Rolling Hills Estates, and he was expressing just his own opinion, not as the councils, because the council, their council hasn't discussed it, but they are much more in favor of upgrading, and he had several suggestions about upgrading cell service instead of having something like the siren, but that was just speaking for them. Talked to another council member that...
So this is not the same council member who voted in favor of doing it at the emergency meeting? That's correct?
No, it was a different council member, so that's what I'm doing. I kind of got that feeling when I was listening to that, that there was a vote. The vote to go ahead and direct staffs to look at this was more like a, because I would say that the, my observation as a listener on the call was that interest in this was lukewarm to say the most about it at the meeting. So I was quite surprised when everybody voted yes to have staff spend more time on this. And my concern was us, anybody, not just our staff, any of the city staff, spending time on something that might be DOA as soon as it gets to the council. So, not trying to undermine anything from the PPSC, but just trying to ask, you know, with other council members, what they felt. Another one that I talked to didn't really know anything about it, because if you hadn't been to the PP, if you weren't a member of the PPSC, you might not have known about it. So this council member said, well, I need to have more information about it. She said, you know, it sounds interesting, but, and then I have two other calls out to other council members from other cities that have not gotten back to me yet.
I got a similar comment I forgot to say about this. I talked to Dave Bradley.
Oh, good, because that was somebody that I reached out to him.
He called me, and he basically had the same comment, which was, well, I don't know much about this, he approached me on this, and it sounds like something to consider, but he was going to ask for it to be put on their agenda in May, so.
He's, I get, when I reached out to Crookshank, he told me to call Bradley and Eric, because they were the, their safety committee. So that was why I reached out to them. So I'm not trying to undermine the concept of what the PPSC is doing and having, seeing if there's interest for getting grants and having a peninsula-wide thing. I'm just trying to reach out to other council members and see what they think.
Okay, public comment? I'm sorry, anybody else? Public comment? Okay. Back to council.
I make a motion, receive and file.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Who opposed? So now we recess to closed session. I didn't miss anything, did I?
Nope.
I believe that's it.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Jim.
Okay.